Dan, let me like, Dan just reminded me I have to over this meeting.
Oh.
Because they have election of officers.
Trump's doing it.
Trump's doing it.
So this meeting is duly open for business. Call to order. Enter team of motion for chair of the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we reelect Dan as the chairman.
Oh, yes.
Chairperson.
Is your second?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Back to you, congratulations.
I'd like a nomination for vice chair, please.
I'll gladly give up. Any takers this year?
I'll nominate, I'd like to nominate Kim Woodson.
Second?
Any further nominations? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
So quiet. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay, so any public input? Okay, we'll move right along. Approval of minutes for April 2nd.
The vote?
Second. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll attend because I want them to hear. Okay, that's fine. The manifest, I think, are down by Kim. Treasures report is next. What are you going to do, public input?
Will do? Yeah, I'll be, okay.
That one, there's nothing.
You have the Treasures report in front of you?
I didn't hear a second. Yep.
Okay. The only little footnote would be under others on the first page. Capital reserve is 132,140.
Is that others?
Yeah, where it says others on the first page. And that would be also under, would include others on the back page, but it's in there. But that's the only discrepancy that is.
So you're saying that the capital reserve funds?
Those are the monies that we invoice the trustees for the HBAC and the roof project.
Oh, gotcha, okay, got it, okay.
Understand your name?
Yep, got it, thank you very much.
Other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Next thing, if you've got any agenda, is Tom, we have a budget update.
I was hoping to have proposed entry for you for tonight. I'm afraid to dig it away. Got some, some issues Dale and I have been working with in, in operations. And a couple accounts are pretty well overspent. Where we are with prepaid fuel and usage at this point, I believe that the, about $47,000 unused in the fuel accounts, that I'm going to be able to reallocate to some of the other building and grounds accounts that need it, some of the repairs accounts and equipment accounts are overspent at this point. So I will be preparing an entry. I'm sorry, I thought I was going to have it for tonight, but actually I will do the entry and then bring it to you next time for review.
Anything else?
And the reason the capital reserve funds weren't reconciled previously is because the information might yet have been received from Bank and H. So...
Because what, Tom?
We don't have the, the month end reports from Bank and H yet. So I did prefer a form of the hand. It doesn't recognize the, a little bit of interest or anything for the end of March, which is a fairly accurate number at the end of March when we get there.
Any questions for Tom?
We did have a pre-bid meeting for food service management companies. We had representatives from the Addy Group, from Cafe Services, and Aladdin, which is a bit spelt. No other vendor showed at the pre-bid meeting, which was mandatory. So I expect that those are the three that will be bidding on, on project. And also, last week on the same line, we had what's called an administrative review from the Bureau of Nutrition, Department of Ed. And that was rather eye-opening. So we've got both our vendor and we have a fair amount of work to do getting into compliance in a couple of areas. Is there a deadline on the compliance date? Haven't even gotten the official response yet. Some will be called technical assistance, some will be corrective actions that would actually require responses. We'll share that with everyone when we actually get to reports. Now, is that going to hold off the making bids based on requirements? No, it shouldn't. If anything, it suggests in some cases that we collectively need to be taking a look at our, at our vendors and making sure that they're doing what the contract says they should be doing. If the contract is driven by the federal requirements. So if we're not meeting the federal requirements, then there's a question as to whether or not we're performing against the contract. Keep moving forward.
Let it on the business side.
That's just a...
Okay. I'm finished business. It's no makeup days.
Part of the board mailing, I sent you a little, a little list of what we missed so far. We missed several partial days, of course, including today. A total of five of those, but the, one, obviously the ones that are the bigger, the bigger issue, that are the two full days that we missed so far. I don't know if you were going to ask at all by parents or community members about what, what's going to happen. Students are going to be required to make up those two days, or if we're going to do what we did last year, which was to end school on the day that was on the calendar. Our calculations again show that we meet the state requirements for hours in both buildings, so technically we wouldn't have to make up the time with students, provided we don't miss too many more days. So something for the board to consider. Take action on soon, if not tonight, soon, so that people can plan accordingly.
When we did this last year, was there consensus that the teachers felt they were able to finish everything that was in their schedules?
Yeah, I think, credit, obviously an important, an important point, and I think that that worked well last year, and I would anticipate that we find as well this year.
Try to remember, what, how many was it last year?
Last year we had missed four student days.
Four full, four days, right?
Four full days, exactly. And we elected not to have students make those up. We did elect to have teachers make those days up to fulfill the 188-day contract.
But Amy from the state sent out how you calculate that.
Right.
So, do you use that as well?
Yeah, that's, if we, to calculate the number of hours, yes, we use the information that she says.
Okay. How is it that it works? Typically, we, past history, we've always made them up somehow. How is it that we aren't anymore? I wonder how we're getting away with that. Not away with it, but how come it works now?
Well, then you have, you have two options. I mean, you have a, you have to go on a certain number of days or a certain number of hours. And if you don't meet, if you don't meet the daily option, then you, you can meet the state requirements if you go enough hours, which we have. That's a way of saying there's enough, a little bit of extra time built in the schedule, as there always is for snow day. And, yeah, I can't speak to the past, how that was, or how that was conducted, but that's, that's how we did it last year. And certainly that option's on the table this year. The board wishes to do that.
If we were to go ahead and do that, and then only find out that for some reason you have other missed student days, would we have to revisit this?
We'd have to. Yep. Yeah, that would be a logical way. We'd have to go back and revisit a, I mean, who knows? We, we could, we could miss tomorrow if the wind keeps blowing and we get massive power outages and everything else, who knows?
Has anyone else in the, any other district done, have they ever done it this way? Yeah, I mean, since you've been aboard, anyone?
I, not, not that I'm aware of, really. I think, I think some have, some haven't, I, but I'm not sure how.
Not either, have I?
Yeah, it hasn't been something, I guess it's been a big topic with...
Yeah, so we almost made them up. Was that? We almost made them up. Yeah. How much time did they build in? You said that it was kind of built in. Do you know how much that came in?
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a fair amount. You know, last, last year, we, obviously we missed four days, and we have enough built in still to, to cover the student.
Yep. You need 945 for elementary, 990 for... Okay.
And those are student contact hours?
Yep.
So, so last year, when we did this, did, were there any, especially the high school level, were there any students that were struggling because they still had things to make up from those days that they missed, or it was, there was nobody that popped down their yard?
I think it was a strange, it was a, yeah, no, nobody kind of popped up. This year, with the, every other day, schedule, two days, it's one class. And at the end of the year, in June, one class is...
Second break. Second break, so...
But there's, there's success with the break.
Not at, not at that year, type of year, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, my understanding, from reading the little stuff I have here, is that kindergarten, for example, would not make up any time. It's only 400 and some...
Yeah, we're more than covered there.
Like outstripping everybody.
And I, I think restorably, I said 35, I'd use the hourly formula, which I can do that.
Yeah, good, you know. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with not having them physically here as long as we meet all the guidelines and, and meet our requirements, I mean, that...
If you make them at the end of the year, it's going to be wasted days anyway.
Of course. Been there. Yeah. You need to report the next time up. Yeah, if you could check in that, that'd be good to know if anybody else has done that. Okay, finished business. Recommended security infrastructure funds, funds.
Just, just the, just an update, the, the final application I made was, was recommended for approval. Again, it hasn't gone through the rest of the process, it's simply not the first part of the process. That's to replace the emergency egress steps at Lakeway, that being in the, that the port, where the portables are, those wooden steps. So that's, that's approved, and we, in the near future, we're going to need to go through those, all those now, once, once we get final approval from the governor. Once that's done, we'll have to go back through those. I think we do have to have a public hearing on that, and, but that will be in the near future. We are, yeah.
Somewhere I'll be reminded of the concern about structural engineer for those studies.
Yes.
I think that was from the chief, Chris Eri, so...
Yeah, and obviously they could change things a bit, though.
Okay. Ellie, I guess you're the special ed.
All right. Enrollment's up a little bit this month, from 126 to 131 and counting. I just left that the DLM window's still open for that alt assessment. I had Patty attach a memo for indicator 11, which is timeliness of initial evaluation. Any students that have gone through their first evaluation, that's one of our compliance indicators, and we're 100% compliant on that. For extended school year or summer school, I attached the dates below. Because the fourth falls on a Wednesday, we're not going to go that Wednesday and Thursday of the first week of July, so we'll only have 14 days instead of 16, which is what we typically have, but that shouldn't be a problem. And in working with Crystal, we are looking at following the same model that we've done the last couple of years, where we have a regular ed teacher and a special ed teacher co-teach the groups, because it allows for integration of regular ed and special ed students in one class. And those, the first thing went up last week for, internally for summer school positions.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen?
Our enrollment numbers kind of maintain 341 right now. Students that are in the news, Marco Silva, placed first with a short story, earning the Charles Hildebrandt Award for Excellence in Holocaust and Genocide Studies from the Cohen Center at King University.
It's great.
It is. It's nice to see their writing getting awarded. Vincent Silva competed at the New Hampshire National Geography Competition a few weekends ago. Madeline Carbono competed at the state level American Legion Junior Oracle Contest. And Tyler Thompson was selected to be part of the Speed Reader Program representing White Hat Motorsports Park. So he'll go into schools and leave with the kids, and they'll meet achievements and then be able to sign hit the hood of his car, or his track, whatever you like. Our LHS athletes representing the Granite State Conference include Ben Sweeney for his boys' Alpine skiing, Laney Hadlock for girls' basketball, and Danny Kupkowski for the boys' basketball north. This past weekend, our LHS players finished their performance of The Tempest. It was fun. Got such great talent there. We had some of the elementary school winter program students come up and do the introductory scene, and then some of our players come from other schools as well, so it's, it's nice to see their community resource program as well. I'm working with battalion commander Clayton Mersing on a, on updating our alumni veterans' banners in the front lobby. So we were on the radio the other day, and we'll do a channel two or a video broadcasting recording on Wednesday. On March 14th, we didn't have our student walkout because it was a snow day, but I wanted the community to know. We had two student leaders who organized a peaceful, positive walkout with a focus on kindness activities, not so much on control as you saw across the country, but really looking at how to make our community positive, and I need our greater community to know that. Our program of study is out, our students are starting to select their courses for next year. So we are ahead of schedule from where we were in the past, and looking forward to that our guidance counselors running the schedule to see where we may have some conflicts for our students, based on our student interest in courses. The above-the-notch community school proposal grant work, that's the adult ed program, looking at 15-year-olds and up, 15, 16-year-olds and up. We have the support of the New Hampshire Department of Education and have been awarded a startup grant. Our demographic focus is northern graph in Hollis County, so it's a Littleton school that would replace our, the whole learn approach that we've had in the past. It is going to be direct instruction, project-based, competency-based programs, rather than an online program that we use, that we use to our learn right now. So I'm hoping to get that program started. It has an internship and job embedded components. So we're looking forward for a population of our kids who could really benefit from that approach to learning, looking forward to scheduling them into that program for the start of next school year. Ray has gone through and given me what I should talk about, but if there's any, any questions or other elements, please let me know. Senior, Littleton scholarship applications are due tomorrow. I've done all calls, emails to the families and to the students to remind them to get their resource, their applications, and because that's what, the form that we use to award a lot of our class night scholarships, and very important that they get those in. We're planning an Alice training opportunity for students' parents, board members, community members, on May 17th at 6:00. Littleton PD will partner with us and our trainers, Ray, to kind of let them understand that whole process. We, we did a community collaborative, and we're able to inform maybe four or five families of the process, and we just want to go through more of the protocols and what to expect. So that's, some of the scenarios and so forth, that's something we're looking forward Our next community collaborative is April 19th, and we're going to focus on learning culture and student learning, as well as introduce families to some of the travel opportunities. We'll look forward the following week, the third, I believe, to a travel night where families can come and actually sign their student, their children up for some of those opportunities. In my report, I did list some of the upcoming events, they're on our school calendar. There's probably more than a dozen with the dates and times for the end of the year events that are coming up.
Is there an honors, there's an honors day one morning, isn't it? Assembly or honors?
Honors assembly, yes, okay. The students who are on the honor roll, principals list in the honor roll, and we'll look at that maybe a little differently next year, but we have that at 12:35 on Thursday this week. I'll send a notice to families as well. Did not put that in my weekly call.
Dale's going to be a bit late, I told him. So it looks like Dale is on next.
All right. We have a facilities committee meeting on Friday, the 13th, to cover a lot of the stuff that's in here. The update of summer custodian positions, we posted them internally, six total positions, and we've received more than six internal applicants, so good change from last summer, where we only had one internal person that worked for us, so it should allow us to get a lot of much-needed projects done. I'll start with just a few things on the technology. The Rave mobile app is, is fully operational.
Oh, wow.
Even inadvertently fully operational. We still have some of the mobile app. We still have a few, not a few, we've, we've been in discussion with the pairs to get it installed on their phones, but all the, both schools have gone through the, the training and installed it on the phones that were necessary. Still working with NotchNet. Met with Crystal and Jen regarding the website, and we want to make it look the same for the elementary school and the high school, so we partnered with NotchNet again, and they're creating some pages for us to work with. And then, really just the, the two big things on the report that, well, actually, first off, there's an RFP that George created for the Academy Windows, based on the bid. We discussed that at the facilities meeting on Friday.
And that date needs to be changed, I would say to 1956, because it still started February 25th, 56.
No, no, I said 1936, and she, I, I'll take, take that as an action for you to change it. But we also want to recalculate the number of windows, because the RFP is written for all the windows, and we think we're better off reversing it just to take it to the floor where the kids are. The other, the two large things that, you know, for discussion and sort of making an action would be the univentilators. In order for us to have those installed by the end of the summer, we need to order them as soon as possible. It's a 10 to, or 12 to 14-week process, so if we were to order them as early as next week, we're looking at the end of July before they arrive.
Okay.
Okay, so there's seven in next year's budget of roughly 12,000 apiece, so 84,000. However, in conversation with Steve, if we could take for those unexpendanted funds this year, would, I guess, free up some opportunity for us for, for next year, if we wait for the, the rollover financially.
Do we ever get an answer on whether or not we could write up DOs in this fiscal year and a half for next year?
No, the, it usually starts mid-May. We'll start fighting next fiscal year.
So mid-May, we could, we could...
Mid-May, we certainly can do it.
Wait till mid-May, what does that do?
They won't be in before the start of school, they wouldn't be able to be put in in full December vacation.
We can work with that. If the board decides that this is the direction you're going to go, I can substitute the minutes of the meeting with the vote for the purchase order until the purchase order can actually be created.
Or we can order them.
Right.
We can order them. You're not going to pay for them until next fiscal year anyway.
So that's... So that's $84,000 coming out of next year's budget. Is that what we're saying?
If that's what you're...
The question, it's always been the next year's budget. We, we decide as a facilities committee to move the 60,000 that was for the gym to univentilators, plus we already had 24,000 in there for univentilators. I think we would be best suited if we tried to pay for as much as we could out of this current fiscal year's budget to use that money for other, I mean, look at the overspend that Tom talked about earlier, are all things that came up this year that weren't planned. And there is obviously no leeway in next year's budget currently.
When will we know as far as better feel for unexpendanted funds? Okay, that, so, that depends on whatever actions may be taken. If we decide that anything that isn't ordered isn't going to be ordered, then we can start to close open purchase letters and get down to some serious matters. We're going to continue to just go ahead and stay with business as usual, see what's left, and be further out. We need to get these on order, and if, if we have the funds in this present budget, like Dale was saying, next year, who knows what surprises we're going to have, and it's a pretty slim budget as it is.
Well, the other thing is too, you can't count on the capital reserve because they're getting pretty slim. Because you also, you know, we only have about 52,000 in the equipment right now, so if we were to spend 24,000, you'd have 28,000. And then if you take the unexpendanted surplus, if we can't move it, I don't know, it would all tend to what we've got.
We've also got, we've also got the one other item, the 32,000 dollar chimney issue, that I would rather see us use, I would rather see us use funds that are left over, that we have unexpendited funds for that, and leave the capital reserve funds alone, and move forward with purchase orders and pay for the univentilators on a next budget as we planned. If our, if our capital reserves are that limited, we've got a 33,000 dollar chimney issue that we need to address before we have, you know, carbon monoxide issues or any backup of smoke that we did this year. To me, that's a, that's a higher priority to use unexpendited funds on than the univentilators are.
Because I know in the maintenance budget, we... Because I know in the maintenance budget, we, we get the power vent righ there because we have 138,000, so that would deplete at 205, but that's fine. Yes.
Time is of the essence on the unit ventilator more so than the chimney.
I would not say so personally. I wouldn't want to see CO in the high school.
Well, meaning to leave time to make the units to get it installed before, I mean, vent is not something we'd have to have manufactured itself in the by and we've had it reinstalled.
Yeah, I think the director of operations made it clear that we want to have the unit ventilators functioning by the beginning of school and not wait till December. We need to move tonight.
But I think Tom already said we can move tonight.
Yeah.
Still we can exchange funds. I don't think we need to decide on the, on the unexpended funds tonight.
Exactly.
I think we need to move on, get in the POs and letting Tom work that piece so he can get these things ordered.
I agree.
So I'll make a motion that we move both on the unit ventilators and the chimney exhaust system.
Second. Any further discussion?
Do we need to note in that motion of how they're going to be funded?
To be determined based on.
On the budget.
On the budget. Make it a priority. That's what I'm saying. Two things.
They need to be done.
Work it out.
One's a safety issue, one's a, making sure the building is warm enough.
Yep.
They both need to be done. I think it's been well documented.
Okay, so I second. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
We'll do that with yours.
I thought as much time as I could for that. Did well.
Or were you finished yet?
I actually wasn't, but that's okay. Because you asked me to do one thing on Friday regarding storage options, which Patty uploaded to your guys' drive at the end of the day, or sometime near the end of the day today. So those were the three options that I got back from two different companies and then also something that was in discussion after the facilities meeting on Friday about building a storage cabinet on the back of our stage similar to what is at Lakeway to a new storage.
So has everybody been asked, that needs to be asked about that?
No, I tried that. The building principals have been talked to.
Really? Talked to, asked?
Did I not ask?
We had a conversation and thought it might be a good approach. Everything's in the yet. We have, I don't know, do you talk to?
I can't meet with Mrs. Stein Howard on the logo.
Didn't we have a plan once about where we might do the storage in some hall and empty space and help me, somebody? I walked with you on it and they said that maybe we could do a storage there. No? I don't know.
I don't know. I went through the storage places in the high school. They're very limited because they need to be.
I'm going to ask there that needs to be stored.
I'm going to have to rethink that.
So would this interfere with graduations, other things that other people that use our stage?
No, we measured everything just to confirm that there was no issue with the graduation seating. Also the drama production that was just used, there would still be room behind the.
For all that metal and stuff?
I think, I think we're looking primarily to use that area for the costumes.
Just like the costumes and stuff like that.
Yeah, so much costume. Maybe the costume.
Like closet, a single layered closet.
Which would require huge, a huge square footage.
Then we need to talk to the drama department and that's in the lead this week. Because the other options are.
The other two options are the storage containers, which would not, they would probably give you the same amount of storage space once you created the aisles to put in there. Disadvantage to the storage containers, these things wouldn't be hung up, they would all be boxed. And it was clear, made clear that Drama would prefer to not have their stuff put in a storage container that's outside or in the Washington Street storage area. They would prefer stuff left inside in rooms. We don't, there are not enough rooms at the high school to accommodate all the stuff that's in the academy.
Because she does put some stuff in storage containers, Kane was telling me yesterday.
Probably not clothing. I think that, they do put regular fishes.
She also mentioned the fact that they had to go through all that stuff because some of it's probably not even good.
I mean, this would be a summer project at this point anyways for the movement. There's, there's not enough bodies next, next week for vacation to, to make all of that happen. And Steve and I have been in conversation with, with the chief. He knows we're trying. He knows that we're, we're working on it. He hasn't, he hasn't given us an.
And what about the rises for graduation? Are they going to be stored up there too?
They're already stored in the, in the old art room directly across the hall from the gym. Stairs are stored there for graduation. Everything that can be on, that should be on that level is on that level. Sorry, Al.
Do you have any comments, Al?
Both storage, so.
Yes.
So my report, as you do know in terms of staffing, we posted for health science teacher and we have a few applicants that have come in enrollment. We actually, which is strange for this time of year, we gained a couple of students only because they, they moved into one of my districts and they were enrolled in a similar program at their old school. So we increased by a couple of students. Post-secondary connections and industry connections, which I think is positive. I've been asked to serve on the Wake Mountain Community College Advisory Board. I did attend my first meeting, March 28th, so that will certainly is of interest to me as we try to develop more agreements regarding our curriculum opportunities for courses for students. We did visit Wake Mountain Community College with interest of juniors and seniors a couple weeks ago and they offered a program where they, if students are interested, they will enroll students on the spot. We provided them with transcripts and so on. So six students enrolled that day. And you do recall the CDFA grant we received a few years ago through NCIC. There was a scheduled meeting for this Friday just to finalize that entire grant. Received an email today that's been postponed, but it would still happen. Professional development, we did have our first session of professional development with Karen Hess, April 3rd. Originally, this is written in the Perkins Grant for CTE teachers, but it only made sense that all teachers should be involved, so they were. So we were able to utilize teachers' planning time, so she met with teachers on four different sessions and next session is actually tomorrow. You may have heard this from someone else, I'm not sure, but I was fortunate to attend a workshop on March 16th. It was, the focus was really on trauma sensitive schools. Excellent presenter, Cassie Yackley was the presenter and we actually, Mr. Team, have talked about developing some kind of PD relationship with her to work for our schools. She's a very good, Kelly was there, she could probably echo my thoughts.
Now, what is trauma sensitive schools? What does that mean?
Well, it's, it's looking at really your student body, your, even adults and analyzing whether or not students have been involved in trauma and how it affects their learning. So it's, I think it's certainly something that through a different title has been viewed at or looked at in terms of schools and how to reach students who may be struggling in learning for a variety of reasons. But it was real interesting to me, certainly of most interest in what, what programs can be maybe put in place to assist students who may be struggling learners. I don't know, Kelly, do you want anything to that, but?
Well, I would just say that what they're finding is even in utero, if there's drug addiction, things like that, it's having an impact on students that are in the schools. And so it's really just shaping the way schools provide support for all students, including students that may have experienced high levels of stress or trauma from birth or in utero to school age and really supporting those needs. And there's some districts like SE 35, they're actually working with a consultant that we saw at that conference through a grant to develop more trauma-informed, trauma-sensitive schools as well as other districts, I think, right now. Regional is working on this as well.
They hosted, Regional hosted a documentary a few weeks ago in Lancaster, which was attended by some of our teachers and teachers around the whole district. So it's an interesting topic that we felt we need to learn more about.
There's a video that you can download called Resiliency, The Biology of Stress or Resilience, The Biology of Stress. And then there's another documentary called Fever Tigers and that showcases high school students.
That's right.
I think what's really interesting about new technologies are just brain studies with scanning of the brain and seeing really interaction of different parts of the brain of a different student is quite interesting. The brain research that is fairly recent in the past few years. Another update, a program update, business, FBLA. We did go to a competition, seven students that was held March 29th and 30th and two students placed second in the business financial plan and two students finished fourth in a public service announcement competition. It was very well attended. I believe there were over 400 students around the state attending this year's stuff. I think that's it except for just market calendars for June 6th as preschool program will be having their graduation. So the little ladders, our students moving on to kindergarten, June, Wednesday, June 6th at 6:00 PM and we'll have invitations going out, but.
I know.
Extremely busy time of year.
Dale, did you say who the students were, their place?
I can tell you who they were.
Give me a shout.
I've judged that before. Boy, they don't mess around down there. They work hard and it's well organized and Erica deserves a lot of credit.
So the two students who placed second in the financial plan were Sunjay Sood and Owen Stanley, both the district students. And fourth place public announcement was Owen Hoare and Logan Lupus.
Good for them. Congratulations. Okay, Crystal is not here.
I can give a report for it. Okay, for the month of April, there were six new students in Lakeway and no students left. So that brings the enrollment now in Lakeway up to 368, which is near the high. The high was actually back in September, October 375, August 377, but it's been going down a bit, but that brought back up a little bit. School goals for this year, use data to drive instruction, promote positive engaged classroom school climate, continue align scaffold instructional, align hand scaffold instructional practices, approve and use the use of technology in our school and then within that aligning those to the, to the three main goals of UDL, CBE and SEL. Curriculum staff development, march in service data success. We had a speaker, Percy Hill, we talked about this a little bit once before as well. Afternoon sessions included Project Lead the Way, math training, special education, file reviews and curriculum work and more Percy Hill. Several more PD, opportunity staff are participating in right now, including a make and take math workshop and a universal design for learning summit that will be next week during break. She said we're currently looking at our overall schedule at Lakeway. There will be some changes made to better accommodate the grade levels. Technology Project Lead the Way modules have been selected. Amy Cop and Laura Reed have been training staff. This will continue with year, end of year professional development. Under personnel, no openings. School parents, community events, Walking Wednesday has resumed. Hopefully that will happen this week and we'll see if it's better. Lakeway will be participating in Bike to School Day on May the 9th. More details to follow. Kindergarten registration will be on May 17th and 18th. This will be advertised in local papers soon. Preparation and planning has begun for our Bike Rio, which will be on Sunday, May 20th from 12 to 2. Always a fun event. I went to that last year. Lakeway staff participated in Red Sox and Dana Farmer fundraising by donating a total of $220 and wearing Red Sox gear to school on the opening day of Fenway. And congratulations to the Maniacs, that's our, as you're wondering, that's our, one of our DI teams for their second place finish at the state Destination Imagination competition on Saturday, April 7th. Way to go. I was over at Lakeway the other day and had, had the chance to see, see all, all three of the, of the groups perform and was struck by how, again, how, how much they improved. For one thing, I saw one of the groups practice a month or so ago and of course they improved remarkably and it's not surprising they were successful at state.
Okay. Personnel report, none or nothing. Facilities, we've got three boards. Policies, I'm going to go JICD, JICFA and JLF because there's a few more changes that need to be done. We'll bring those back. So we're going to be looking at policy JIC, student conduct. Can you jump right in?
JLF.
JIC.
JIC.
Student conduct. I haven't had a chance to look them up. It was, policy JICD was originally called student conduct, discipline and due process, so looking at the, you know, the school boards and ours, we separated them out a little more.
It's a little easier to understand.
Yeah. So yeah, we aligned our statement policy with the state. So shall we move on and?
Move on.
Move on once. The next one would be policy VEDB, which is protective preparation and dissemination. The next one would be policy VEDV, which is Protective Preparation and Dissemination.
These are all for first read?
Uh, someone, we'll see.
This one would be first read and adoption.
Yeah. Student conduct was first read and adoption.
Okay.
Uh, VEDV is the same way.
Okay.
I think there was just only one item that we changed rather than another, I guess. Next?
Next.
EBCA, Emergency Plans, First Read and Adoption. Even though we have an ELP that's being written up, this has to be a policy, so we updated
When you get, when we get these policies, they're recommended from the New Hampshire School Board Association, right? Now you start there anyway.
Yeah, well, they send us, you have a list of priorities.
Yeah.
A list of recommended, and then you can have a list of optional.
Okay.
And sometimes when you're doing these policies, even if it's priority, they'll refer you to one or two others. So it's.
I knew there was a process.
Yeah.
I know a lot.
Yeah. I will say that all of our priority regulated by the legislature, we have taken care of, but sometimes there's a little bit of an update in some of them.
And you just want people to know this is just something you're coming up with that you have a template.
And then at the end of the legislative season, the New Hampshire School Board's legislative person will send us an update for any, for other policies that we may have to change again. So, it's part of the games. Well, I think this is pretty much from the state ones that hold out, it's all listed. When you're ready.
Is anybody good?
Okay. The next one is KCD, which talks about public gifts and donations. I know we recently had some public gifts and I don't think we really had this policy in place. So now it talks about the purpose of the policy. So that will help when people need to look at them. And then I think the other one is the procedure, which is KCD-R. So all of those, that's it. We're all, first read and adoption tonight, folks. So whoever wants to motion.
Good.
All right. So to make a motion to accept our first read and adoption, policies JIC, policy VEDV, EBCA, EH, KCD, and KCD-R. Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's a lot of time.
There's more to come.
There's more to come. Yeah. Superintendent's report.
Okay, just a few items. Arts Alliance of Northern New Hampshire, I was invited to join that board fairly recently, so I've been going to a few of those, to their board meetings and working with programming that they're doing in this part of the state. The school district's been heavily involved with them in the past. They brought in a lot of programs in the last couple of weeks. I know they're responsible for a couple of performances with our band students and other activities as well, so I look forward to continuing to support their work and specifically their work as it improves opportunities for our students. Keeping with the theme of the arts a little bit, with the whole mental health crisis is, I think, is gripping many, many schools and communities. Many of that driven by substance abuse and other conditions. A lot of the shift I know certainly is here recently with programs has been the value of the arts in addressing and supporting students and adults, for that matter, with mental health types of issues. Al spoke a little bit already earlier today about the trauma-centered schools and understanding the traumas that students come with and sometimes adults experience as well. But I think as we go forward, certainly, we all, we love the arts for the, certainly as, as audience members, as the last weekend with the play, we like the arts to watch that, but they also have a tremendous opportunity, I think, and tremendous ability to support students in terms of their mental health. Tom mentioned the food service audit, so we'll expand on that much more other than certainly, I was present at the exit interview that took a little bit and certainly will second what he had to say, that there's a little bit of work to do there, but we'll be working on that. Four teachers in Iowa will be going to a Universal Design for Learning Conference next week, Orlando, this is a national conference, one that we sent a number of teachers and administrators to a year ago. And again, this was the follow-up on the work that we do with Universal Design, to look at it from a national perspective, to see different schools around the country, the presentations that they do with respect to that particular technique. We would like to do in the near future presentations to the board on the three major goals that we've been working on this year, that being the competency-based education, universal design for learning, and socioemotional learning. So we'd like to take a, and I mentioned that in my memo, but we'd like to take a little bit of a board meeting and each, before we get out of here, or at least before we end this particular year, and give the board, and by extension, the community that watches these board meetings, a good indication of what we're doing in those areas, where we are in the work that we will be doing going forward. Jennifer spoke a little bit about Brother Knott's Community School. Start out, as you know, some time ago, we came to the board asking to start to explore a different type of program for students that weren't succeeding, to look at other ways to address the needs of students besides using some of the programs that we have right now. You know, I think as we start looking at computer-based education and distributed learning, there's tremendous potential there. And some of our students have been successful with that particular approach, but not nearly enough. And so, moving forward, a lot of work's been done on that, a lot of progress is being made on that, and we hope that as we move into next year, we can make some real differences with that. And I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. I might have Jim, you mentioned one other thing about negotiations.
Yeah. As per the warrants article that we passed that allowed for us to reopen negotiations if the LTA contract did not pass, we did enter into a new negotiation. We had one extended meeting, and that meeting, we had not reached an agreement, and we were scheduled for another meeting, and were then informed that the LTA has decided to wait until next year to reopen negotiations. So this year's negotiation will remain status quo.
Okay. All right. So I guess we need to entertain the non-public session.
Make the motion, enter in the non-public session under paragraph two, section three of Yards 891A colon three, of the right-to-know law for number three, matters of diversity affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, and number two, the hiring of any persons as a public employee. Taking with us the superintendent.
Tom, Patty.
Business manager. Patty.
Yeah, Jennifer and Greg, please.
Jennifer.
Jennifer and Greg. Okay, do yours, second? No call.
Greg.
And Al. Sorry, Al didn't need to leave you out of this.
No, there's one here. All right. Melanie Nels?
Jim.
Emily Nels.